Kerrville City Council is now in session, and Councilwoman Eichner will lead us in prayer and then in the pledge. Let's stand.
Lord, as we come tonight, we're very, very grateful for many of the people that we are honoring. It's wonderful to live in a community where we look up to these people and we have people that look up to us and do what is right, do what they're supposed to do, and make us proud. We ask that you be with them, be with their families, bless them. We also ask, Lord, that you continue to be with our frontline people who are still being asked to do things that they've never been asked to do before. And we ask that you give them the courage and the wisdom and the strength to do what they need to do. And we thank you, Lord, for just the opportunity to live in the great community that we live in. We appreciate it, and we're grateful for your blessings as we enjoy a wonderful, wonderful place to live. In Christ's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me go over some procedural matters. Citizen or public participation continues to be available by calling in via Zoom, emailing, or using the City Hall Dropbox beforehand. All of these instructions are provided online and in the agenda. If anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, by now they would have been required to sign up when they came into the building. When speakers are called, they're to come to the podium in front of the stage and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Also, they're to wear masks, but when you come to the podium, you can take that off. Public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have been concluded. Thank you in advance for following these procedures. And now, are there items of community interest from the council or from citizens?
Can I, I'd like to just mention the airport wars event that went on nine or 10 days ago out at the airport, and it was an event put on by Mr. Donegan and Flying Diesel Performance. And I asked him to give me a little report about how that event went, and he wanted us to know that all the restaurants were packed after the event, that 80% of his racers and their families were from out of town that came in for this event. They had over 300 that turned out as spectators, so much that they had to shut the doors and could no longer allow people to come in. And in spite of the rain, they had a turnout of 3,000 that generated about $15,000 in ticket sales alone. The community feedback was all positive, including from social media posts to phone calls to in-person visits that people came in to give him feedback about the event. And he generated 20 local sponsors. He had six police officers on site with not a single incident, and that cleanup out there was minimal. So I just wanted to give a kudos to him for putting off a really great event that this community enjoyed.
I will tell you, I enjoyed it. I really did, and Judy was there as well. I restrained myself from entering my Toyota Tacoma pickup, but anyway, it was a good time.
Yeah, it was. They did a great job. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, we're honoring so many groups tonight, but one group with the Deert Center. I'd like to just say a few things about what they do with their Meals on Wheels. I think we've all had an opportunity or will to ride with them, and it's been very interesting. It's well, well organized. They delivered to about 250 people. They have 17 routes, so each driver has about 12 to 15 people on their route every day. They have 100 drivers. They go to Center Point, they go to Hunt and Ingram, and what they do is just phenomenal as they are getting all of their food. It's just, it is as organized as it can be inside the walls of the Deert Center, and then they're off to make a huge difference in people's days. The other thing that they did, and I don't believe it's in the proclamation, but a week ago Monday, they gave 143 COVID shots to those Meals on Wheels people. And that was, that had to be a major undertaking to get that done. And their executive director, Brenda Thompson, if you happen to see the Kerr County People Magazine, she's had an article in there. She calls what they do "dancing the pandemic shuffle." And so I think that's exactly what they've been doing and what they are doing, and they do so much more than just the Meals on Wheels. But that's one of their most, one of the things that we see the most in the community. So I just want to say thank you to them and all their drivers for that, for the wonderful contribution to our community.
Good, good. Well, let's do some recognitions. Could I have the American Red Cross representatives here on the stage? You know, the work of the American Red Cross, it really is phenomenal. Let me read the proclamation. March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank volunteers, our everyday heroes, those who reach out to help their neighbors when they are in need, and whereas the American Red Cross heroes on the front lines every day, even during a pandemic or natural disaster. They volunteer their time, enhance skills, give blood, provide financial donations to help those in need. Over the past year, Red Cross has adapted their service delivery to protect the health and safety of their clients and volunteers. The disaster assistance volunteers have attended training to increase their technology, technological skills to support their effort, and whereas the Hill Country Chapter was chartered in 1917, we would like to remember our heroes here who give to help people in need. They work tirelessly to help in time of disaster when someone needs life-saving blood or the comfort of helping hand. They install free smoke alarms, they provide round-the-clock support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and teach life-saving classes in CPR, aquatics, aquatic safety, and first aid. And whereas we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. And now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as American Red Cross Month. And I am going to sign that, and then I want you to make some comments and introduce yourself.
On behalf of the Red Cross, we just want to say thank you for your support. And I also know that the fire department is here. They are very vital in the smoke alarm installation, and I also want to say thank you to them. We appreciate all that you do for us.
All right, all right. And we thank you for all you do, the community, and what you have done over these recent years.
I didn't introduce myself, but...
No, yeah, okay. All right.
I'm a board member. I'm Stephanie Miller, a board member of the Red Cross.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. At this time, would folks from the Deert Center please come up? This is Brenda Thompson, who Councilmember Eichner was referring to just a moment ago. Meals on Wheels does so much. And once again, this year, Thursday, I get to participate in delivering some meals and seeing what they're doing. But I will say, I have a particular appreciation for Meals on Wheels because when my mother, and I've mentioned this before, when my mother was 97, she was a volunteer at Meals on Wheels in San Angelo and was named the National Volunteer of the Year for Meals on Wheels. So I have great appreciation. President, on March 22, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. Meals on Wheels America established the Meals, March for Meals campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition program, both congregate and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of seniors, the need for providing meals for senior adults. Whereas the Meals on Wheels program, both congregate and home-delivered, in Kerr County has served our community admirably for more than 50 years. Volunteers for Meals on Wheels programs in Kerr County are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals and disability and persons with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas the Meals on Wheels program in Kerr County provides a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. Meals on Wheels program deserves the recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities, our state, and our nation. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as the 19th Annual March for Meals Month. So I fix my signature.
Thank you so much. We are so in awe of all the community support, city support that we are able to do of our Meals on Wheels program. Last year, we served, we delivered over 70,000 meals in our community and gave out about over 25,000 meals in our dining room. Our dining room this year, because of the pandemic, was closed, but we've been delivering, we have a drive-through, and so people are driving through and picking up their meals about 30 to 40 a day. And so they're hungry for the food, and they're hungry for getting back together. So we're looking forward to hopefully in the next couple of months welcoming everybody back into our building. One thing that's really awesome and I'm so proud of is that no senior has been without food during this last pandemic, the freeze during, the freeze of whatever you call it. But we made sure all of our seniors had food. We called them every day to check on them, and we just helped make sure that they were not in isolation, and that's what our program is all about. So thank you so much for this proclamation, and we will move forward and keep on doing what we're doing for another 50 years. Thank you.
Okay, with the Don't Mess with Texas Trash Off Month representatives, please come up. Oh, okay, okay. One of the things that I am very concerned about as mayor is protecting the beauty of our area. And this kind of effort related to picking up trash, keeping things cleaner, is very much a part of that. So whereas the council takes great pride in Kerrville and encourages all residents to be responsible citizens in litter prevention and waste reduction, and whereas the presence of litter in our community presents health hazards to our citizens and can lead to the devaluing of property. By contrast, a clean community discourages littering and improves overall quality of life along with increased property values. And whereas community cleanup and beautification projects are welcomed by this council as a cost-effective method of keeping the city clean and saving taxpayer money by reducing the need to spend the, well, spend money on cleaning up litter. Whereas the City of Kerrville's Make a Difference Committee has become a member of the Texas Department of Transportation's Adopt a Highway Program. City staff and other volunteers are assigned a two-mile section of Loop 98 to be cleared and four times annually. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Don't Mess with Texas Trash Off Month. Koi, you have something to share with us?
Hi, my name is Koi, and I work with the city, and I'm a member of the Make a Difference Committee, and it's an awesome committee. We are always looking for more volunteers, hint, hint, and if you're interested, please be sure to let us know. It's a fun day to get along with your family, friends, and other coworkers. And here's one of mine right here.
All right, okay. Let's get a picture presenting this to you.
We want to say something too.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think our next cleanup is April the 10th from 9:00 to 11:00, and we're meeting in the parking lot at J.C. Penney. So come on out and join us.
Good, good. Okay. Get a picture. We're not through. I think we have an Officer of the Year presentation.
Officer Jacob Trevino, could I get you to join me on the stage? Mayor, Council, members of the public, members of our team from Kerrville Police Department, thank you all for being here and giving me the opportunity to be able to recognize Officer Trevino as the Kerrville Police Department Police Officer of the Year. Officer Trevino was nominated by his sergeant, Sergeant Haas, and he had a lot of nice things to say about Officer Trevino in his nomination letter, and I have to concur, as I've got to know Officer Trevino and the department and the things that go on there and the things that he is involved with, it's truly impressive. His sergeant noted that he always comes to work with a positive attitude and a willingness to strive in his everyday duties to do the best he can. Part of those duties is not only being a patrol officer for our department, but he is also a field training officer, which means he trains our new recruits that come into the department and brings them up to speed, preparing them to go out and be police officers. He is also an evidence technician for our department, which means he helps process crime scenes and document evidence at crime scenes and collect that evidence. And if that weren't enough, he is also a negotiator on our special operations unit, which requires in and of itself a special skill set of communication that not everyone has, and certainly appreciate him for stepping up in all those roles within the agency, filling voids everywhere within the department that he can. Beyond that, we've recently started a recruitment team, and Officer Trevino has raised his hand to be part of that and go out and help us recruit in new officers, high-quality candidates into our organization, and we're very proud to have him onboard that team as well. Sergeant Haas noted several things that have occurred over this last year that Officer Trevino was involved in to demonstrate his everyday efforts within the police department, and it's a wide array of things that he outlined. One of those things involved Officer Trevino responding to the crisis stabilization unit where staff there were concerned about the aggressiveness of one of the clients there. Officer Trevino responded, and once he got there, the individual was on the verge of becoming physically hostile. He was able to de-escalate that situation through conversation and communication with the individual, and eventually was able to resolve that without any force having to be used, without the individual sustaining any injuries and being able to create a positive outcome in that. Officer Trevino also had an opportunity to respond to a very routine call, found property, went to a restaurant locally and picked up a ring that was valued around $10,000. Normally, most cases, those things, reports written, and that's placed into evidence, and we hope the owner comes and claims that, looking for their property. In this case, Officer Trevino went above and beyond. He located initials inside the ring, went into our local computer database, looked for someone with those initials, found that person, looked them up on social media, found a picture of them actually wearing the ring, and contacted them in an effort to get that ring back to the appropriate owner, way above and beyond in that area, and that's just a demonstration of how he approaches all of the things that he does in his daily duties. Officer Trevino also had an opportunity or the occasion to respond to a call of an individual who was not breathing and had no pulse. He was the first officer to arrive on scene and immediately began CPR, and paramedics arrived and continued to treat him. That individual was revived and later transported to a San Antonio hospital, extending that individual's life through his efforts by being able to provide those life-saving skills that he has been trained to provide. As you can see, Officer Trevino is very dedicated to his work and to the community and to the citizens, and I'm very proud to have him as part of our team. We have a large showing of folks that he works with every day in support of what he does. I think that shows the character that he has and the impact that he has, not only on the community, but also on his coworkers. And I would just like to say, Officer Trevino, we appreciate everything that you do for our department and for our community, and congratulations on being named the Kerrville Police Department Police Officer of the Year.
So I just asked the mayor if I could make a few remarks. The thing that I really want to do more than anything is not only congratulate him for being such a shining example for our very fine department, which I've, over the last year, have really gotten to know much, much better with the recruitment of our new fantastic police chief, but I want to honor the family. Would Officer Trevino's family members and friends that have come here to see him get this honor, please stand right here. Officers put their lives in harm's way every day, and these families are there to support them, and so we want you to know that we also support you. Thank you.
I want to say just a word about our police department. When you get to know this department and the individuals in it, you realize there is such professionalism and commitment to serve and protect, and I just think we are so blessed. And also blessed with our fire department. If you know what they did during the winter storm recently, it really is amazing and just, you know, well, our hat is off. Chief Maloney, would you come?
Thank you all, Mayor, Council, citizens, for being here tonight. We'd like to recognize two of our Outstanding Persons of the Year. These individuals were nominated by their peers and selected by their peers, and first one I'd like to recognize is Firefighter of the Year, Casey Goodman. Casey, if you would come on up. I have the honor to recognize driver Casey Goodman as Firefighter of the Year. Casey Goodman was hired as a firefighter paramedic in November 2012, promoted to the rank of driver in 2015. He's credentialed as a licensed paramedic, master firefighter, fire instructor II, driver pumper operator, fire officer II, incident safety officer, and basic aircraft rescue. He recently earned a bachelor's of applied arts and sciences in fire and emergency services administration from Texas A&amp;M at San Antonio. Casey displays leadership, dedicated, and committed to his crew, his shift, and his department. He selflessly goes above and beyond the call of volunteering to complete various projects and to serve on committees. He's always a team player, especially when his fellow coworkers ask him for... He's always a team player, especially when his fellow coworkers ask him for direction, advice, and support. Casey's a leader in the department and always researching opportunities for improvement. He's an active field training officer, involved with live burn training, fire and EMS education, paramedic probation, and engaged for a stronger future to ensure the mission of the Kerrville Fire Department of an exceptional team, efficient methods, and excellent service. A few comments made by officers. Casey is a go-to person. He takes pride in doing the job right the first time. He's calm and professional, humble, and a positive attitude. These are few of Casey Goodman's outstanding qualities and traits that earned him the 2021 Firefighter of the Year. Next, I would like to recognize our Officer of the Year, Lieutenant Jaren Floyd. You'll come on up.
I'd have the honor to recognize Lieutenant Jaren Floyd as Officer of the Year. Lieutenant Jaren Floyd was hired as a firefighter in July of 2005, promoted to the rank of driver in 2012, and lieutenant in 2015. Jaren is credentialed as a paramedic, master firefighter, fire service instructor II, basic fire investigator, fire officer II. He recently earned an Associate's of Applied Science in Fire Administration from Weatherford College. He is instrumental in revamping several programs for the Kerrville Fire Department. Beginning with the technical rescue team, he inventoried and organized all the equipment and created detailed taskbooks for each member to log various training activities. He creates spreadsheets and consolidates information into a more organized format to better track the current bunker gear inventory, as well as the annual inspection and repair of the gear. These two tasks alone tremendously improve the organization and efficiency to ensure the safety of our personnel. Jaren also created, presented, and implemented a program to establish a 10-year bunker gear replacement program. This program addresses the Texas Commission on Fire Protection mandated requirements for replacement and provides a timeline for each firefighter to receive a second set of gear. This is a major step toward reducing the exposure of fire ground contaminants and therefore reducing the risk of cancer to our personnel. Implementing these procedures to track inventory and organize equipment and program is a time-consuming task. Lieutenant Floyd has consistently moved forward with this work and has provided the Kerrville Fire Department with a solid framework to further our mission of an exceptional team, efficient methods, and excellent service. Lieutenant Jaren Floyd is a motivator, positive attitude, always researching opportunities for improvement for his crew, his shift, and his department. These are some of the key phrases used by his officers. Exited high professionalism, tremendous effort, and outstanding job. His resolve and leadership exemplifies these characteristics during COVID, during the snow event in 2021 as acting battalion chief. These are just a few of Lieutenant Jaren Floyd's outstanding achievements and values that earned him 2021 Officer of the Year.
So I certainly want to do the same thing for these two gentlemen. Could the families of these two gentlemen please rise so that we can recognize you and honor you? I see some back here and up here. I get texts and communications from Chief Maloney all hours of the day, and as recent as last night, about a structure fire and a death. And so these folks live life and death every day, and we're so blessed to have them protecting our community, protecting us, and they truly are our local heroes and have incredible courage. So thank you all for what you do for our community. Thank you.
Just one quick word. What I was talking about a while ago about professionalism, did you hear these officers, the continuing education that they do, special training that they do, and it pays off? Thank you. We now come to our visitors' citizens forum, and I want you to know that the agenda item is provided to allow citizens who have signed up ahead of time to address the council on any item not related to another specific item on the agenda. And I'm going to ask at this time, by the way, no discussion may take place, no action may be taken, since items are not posted, the council discussed subjects raised, but may later refer questions to staff for follow-up. Ms. McElhannon, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir. We have three. George Burdi.
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. I just want to say, I mean, they've already left, but among all those things that you listed for Mr. Floyd is, or Lieutenant Floyd, is he's also connected to the community, and he's coaching two Little League teams this year on top of all that other stuff. So anyways, so I'm here to talk about something that council already knows about, but there's been a misunderstanding among council that I was asking to speak or to move elections to November. That is not the issue here. I'm just looking for council to clear up the intent to uphold the charter as it pertains to terms of office. So I'm just going to list a little bit of a timeline. So the charter defines council member terms as being two years in duration. No specific beginning or end date is prescribed in the charter, only the terms will be two years in length. City council passed a resolution in January of 2020 ordering the May 2nd, 2020 general election. Due to COVID, the governor issued a proclamation that granted the city the option, did not mandate, to move the May 2nd election to November 3rd without otherwise adjusting the term of office. The city council accepted the governor's option and passed a resolution in April officially moving the May 2nd elections to November 3rd. The council member term length was raised at a city council meeting in December of 2020, and the city attorney stated this year was an exception, and he did not believe that the council was required to honor the charter in this particular case, but that he would research the issue further. So the city charter clearly prescribes the governor's proclamation reaffirms, "The unadjusted terms of office for the recently elected council members, mayor, place three and place four, shall last for two years, beginning on November 3rd and ending no sooner than November of 2022." Due to misleading statements made by council and city attorney previously, I would request the council issue a consensus statement through resolution or similar fashion reassuring the record number of Kerrville voters that turned out last November. The council will defend the charter as written and will not move to shorten council member terms of office. So I have a few questions that you are actually allowed to answer. They're simple yes/no questions. You're allowed to answer factual questions in a visitor's forum, even though it's not on the agenda. So subsequent to December 8th, has council been given any research on the matter from the city attorney? Okay, didn't expect an answer, but I will take that to mean no, you haven't. Is council aware of any proclamation or statute that would authorize defying city charter? I think we're all pretty clear that that's not in existence. Having cited no overriding authority, does council still intend to defy the charter and hold general elections in May, as was sort of implied back in November, or December? And then the last one is to the mayor specifically. You kind of hinted at in December that you intended to resign in May 2022, whether that was the end of your term or not, so is that still your intention? And again, you are entitled to answer those. Thank you.
Jim Sandy?
Good evening. My name is Jim Sandy. My address is 3940 Oak Park Drive. And first, I wanted to thank the city council for all their amazing work. I know you guys handle a large volume of important topics, and you do it on a volunteer basis, essentially getting no pay, so I appreciate that. And I did have a prepared speech. You know, I've addressed this before, where I don't think that, in particular, the city manager is following the city charter paragraph 2.02E as it stated specifically. There's a specific definition of executive position in there, and the city manager has, in his opinion, has expanded that. The definition in the city charter is that an executive position is the head of any department or division within the city, and in the city manager's opinion, an executive position only corresponds to pay grades of 35 or higher. So the city manager has imposed his own opinion, extra criteria on top of the definition that was given explicitly in the city charter, and the result of that is that some applicants for city council who should be disqualified, say, based on a marriage to someone at a pay grade of 34, because of the way the city manager has defined, modified the definition of executive position, the city would decide that candidate, that applicant could be a candidate for city council. And I guess that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Bruce Stricki?
Mr. Mayor, before that, could I make a couple of observations, comments? Excuse me, Bruce, just one second. Ms. Burdi, Mr. Sandy, you know, thank you for your comments. Just a couple of points. As to the changed term length resulting from that suspended 2020 election, we've had many conversations. The city attorney has addressed us and you on this issue several times. And based upon this research to include information from the city estate, the city is merely doing what other cities are doing around the state, and we truly believe that this adaptation is both legal and appropriate. As to the issue about the charter provision regarding qualification for council members, likewise, the city believes that we are following the laws. The information can be found in the budget, and as you've been told on multiple occasions by multiple staff members, all you have to do upon filing for an application, the city secretary works with that candidate to ensure compliance. Again, we believe the city is following the law. In addition, this appears to be one of those situations where you have received answers on both these issues from city staff on multiple occasions. And while I completely respect your right to appear for this council during the visitors' forums, it just seems to me that unless you get the answers that you want, you won't accept the answers that are given to you. We have a very professional, well-trained staff that supplies us as council members with advice on legal, accounting, and management issues, and personally, I'm going to be inclined to listen to the people who have those degrees in law and accounting and city management on these issues.
Mayor, I have a comment as well.
Okay.
Specifically to the comment about the postponement of the election, there was an opinion from an advice offered by the Secretary of State's Election Division. It issued guidance on Sidney's option to temporarily move its May election to November. The opinion is, this is not a permanent move. The governor's proclamation has the effect of postponing an election, but it is not a permanent move. The result is that the current office holders will be holdovers until the next election occurs. Your newly elected office holders in November will have a shorter term. Their next election will return back to the May date from the Secretary of State. So beyond what we've received, I contacted the Texas Municipal League Attorney as well and got the same opinion. So because I was asked to comment through Mr. Burdi's email, that is my comment to that particular visitors' and citizens' forum conversation.
Do any other speakers?
Yes, sir. Bruce Stricki?
Okay.
Well, I'm just glad to be here. It's been way too long and to see all these people and realize what I miss when I use the great facilities we have with the Zoom meetings where you can participate, but it's not the same as being here. And so thank you all for, because you have all been here through everything that we have all gone through, and I'm not going to go through the list because we all know it, but the Zoom meetings and this council have really done a great job in leading us so far. I want to thank the city for the project that's moving forward with Lennar on housing, because as we look at our residential market right now, not only do we need the housing and have we known that for some time, but the movement there, I believe, and I'm speculating, but I can tell you since that started, we're getting much more interest in residential development in Kerrville. We're currently negotiating on some projects that could be really big for Kerrville, and I'm excited about what we may be bringing to y'all, but I want to thank the city because I think it was just that little kicking the rock off the trail that got people to say this is a pathway I ought to go down, and so thank you very much. Residential real estate is desirable, and it's selling, and in the last report we did in our office, there's less than three months' worth of inventory for homes on less than five acres with a Kerrville address, and that's just amazing. It's also saying that people want to live in Kerrville. People want to leave the metro areas and come to a micro metropolitan area, and over the years, Kerrville has become that kind of a place. We have the arts, we have restaurants, we have the river, we have the River Trail, we have city councils and staff that drive those things and make it such a positive, wonderful place to live. It's just a great, great blessing. And then lastly, I want to say, because of that residential development, residential development always happens before commercial, we're starting to see redevelopment of commercial properties. There are three properties on what we call the Golden L in Kerrville right now that are in some state of redevelopment. Golden L, Sidney Baker, and Junction Highway heading toward Walmart. And those projects, if you drive up and down those streets, you're going to see them already. They're in early phases, but the redevelopment of older commercial properties are happening here in Kerrville, and it's happening because this is a great place to live, and these are the kinds of projects we want to see. They're small, they fit the city, they're going to be good, positive things, and I just want to thank you all, staff and council, for all that you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone else to speak?
No, sir. That was our last speaker.
Let's move to the consent agenda, which all of these items would be voted on simultaneously unless council or a citizen pulls one of them, and I want to pull 4C. Do we have any other change in the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve items 4A, 4B, 4D, 4E, and 4F.
Okay, all right.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand? Okay. Let me say just a word about why I wanted to pull 4C. There has been newspaper coverage and so forth about this, and I'm for it, but I wanted our city manager to say a word about this arrangement with James Avery Craftsman.
I'll ask EA to comment on that. He talked to James Avery today.
All right. Sure. So this agreement, as we've outlined within the agenda bill, has gone before the EIC on a couple of occasions. Essentially, what it does is it extends the agreement. The agreement was a five-year agreement. James Avery came to the table and asked for an extension, given the extraordinary circumstances related to the pandemic and economic situation nationally. And so although things have fared very well locally with James Avery here... And so although things have fared very well locally with James Avery here, you know, certainly, you know, their sales across the board, across the nation have been a different story. And so they continue to have very strong results within the local manufacturing facility, which produces great results for the Kerrville community and those professionals being located here and the auxiliary benefits of them, you know, spending those employment dollars here. And so all they asked for basically was a pause in those employment increase numbers and an extension of those numbers. And so EIC felt like it was applicable to grant those to that entity, and that was before you tonight, so.
Major job provider and significant sale tax.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion on 4C?
I'll make a motion we approve item 4C.
I'll second that.
All right. We've got a motion second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. Okay. All right. That's the end of the consent agenda, and now we go to ordinances and second reading. Ms. McLeinen, would you read in 5A?
Ordinance number 2021-07, second reading. An ordinance vacating, abandoning, and closing all right. Title and interest in a portion of a public right-of-way consisting of approximately 8,504 square feet of an unimproved portion of a dedicated street that intersects with Meadowview Lane and thereafter terminates. Said right-of-way dedicated by a platte of a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and recorded in Volume 2, Page 102 of the platte records of Kerr County, Texas, and located on and between the properties known as 304 and 400 Meadowview Lane. Finding that said right-of-way is not required for future use as a public street, ordering recording, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. And we do have two citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Following the first reading, staff has reached out to the adjacent property owner at 304 Meadowview. They're supportive of the closure, and they're wanting to work with the adjacent property owner at 400 Meadowview to go through the replating process and figure out how they'll divide the property, what works best for both homeowners.
All right, okay. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you, Drew, for doing that.
Absolutely, thank you.
This is second reading. Okay, we have a couple of speakers?
Yes, sir. George Burdi.
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. And to Mr. Cochran's point, I'm not actually asking the same question I did before. This is the same agenda item, however. I'm not here to discuss whether or not the city should abandon this particular right-of-way. My concern is with the procedure being used for abandonment, both here and on the next agenda item. While the question of the right-of-way being an easement or fee simple is important, the bigger question is really where to place value of a dedicated street or public right-of-way. Is it in the underlying land or in the right-of-way access itself? It is clearly not in the underlying land because the landowner cannot build on it, cannot erect a fence or any other obstruction across it, and has no authority to regulate movements upon it. The lack of value in the underlying land is confirmed by the fact no taxable value was ever assessed to land with a public right-of-way upon it. In fact, when a right-of-way is created, all value of that value that was in the underlying land is transferred to the public in the form of a right-of-way access. Therefore, a right-of-way abandonment is necessarily conveying value into the underlying land and the corresponding landowner. The Texas Constitution prohibits a city from granting money or thing of value to any individual association or corporation whatsoever. Now, let's look at what has happened in this transaction. The city is proposing to abandon a right-of-way with all its inherent value and therefore transferring this value to one or more property owners who are being asked to pay nothing in return. This is clearly a grant of something of value to an individual, namely land value, being raised from zero to something more. In this case, the grant of land value is going to be between $15,000 and $30,000 based on the adjoining values. It has been suggested that the avoidance of future maintenance costs is the city receiving value. Two problems with this theory. First, this is not value being paid by the individuals receiving the land value, and thus the transaction remains a grant. Second, in the 60 years of this right-of-way being in existence, the city has paid zero maintenance costs. There is no cost of ownership of this right-of-way. If the right-of-way were ever to be developed, it would only be due to the connecting seven-acre property being developed, which would obviously bring property taxes to cover the future maintenance costs. In other words, future maintenance is a false argument. The law is fairly clear in that a city cannot grant anything of value, period, except for economic development, which this is not. But even if it were legal, how can this body reconcile granting public value to private concerns with being good stewards of public resources? And I actually signed up for 5B. You don't need to. Thanks.
Mr. Hayes or Mr. Paxton, can you address that?
Yeah, I'll be happy to. One, it's in one of your wherethes that by adoption of this ordinance, y'all will be making a finding there's little to no value. I happen to think, you know, appraisal perhaps might even be more than the actual value prescribed to this land. Don't forget also that once we peel off our right to use this as a right-of-way, that we also have a water line. I think it's either water or wastewater easement actually in the ground. And so there's very little use that's going to occur on the property. So, you know, as a staff member, as your legal counsel, I stand by my recommendation and argument that there's little to no value and that you can do this without receiving value from either one of these two landowners.
Okay, all right. Do we have another speaker?
Yes, sir. Bruce Stricki?
I represent the landowner, Bruce Stricki, 615 Earl Garrett. I forgot that the first time. Represent the landowner to the north of this property. I was just asked to be here to answer any questions from council or if any issues came up. So thank you for the time.
Bruce, does the landowner to the north have a, take any exception to this?
Absolutely not. Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I will approve that, or move to approve that we adopt a second reading for ordinance 2021-07.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. All in favor of this motion, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously? All right. Let's move to 5B. Ms. McLeinen?
Ordinance number 2021-09, second reading. An ordinance vacating, abandoning, and closing all right. Title and interest in a portion of a public right-of-way consisting of approximate .30 acre and improved dedicated alley that extends across a property located at 615 Elm Street. Said right-of-way dedicated by platte for the West Land Place Edition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and recorded in the plats filed at Volume 43, Page 577, and Volume 45, Page 335 of the Real Property Records of Kerr County, Texas. Finding that said right-of-way is not required for future use of a public right-of-way, ordering recording, providing an effective date, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We did have one citizen speaker, Mr. Burdy, but he declined.
This is our second reading on this. Any comments, counsel? Questions? Okay. Let's hear from the speaker.
No, sir. He just stated that he declined to speak on this item.
All right, okay. Do we have a motion on this matter, 5B?
I will move that we approve ordinance number 2021-09 on the second reading.
All right. Get a second here. Okay, all in favor, if you'd raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Okay. Would you read in 6A?
Resolutions Regarding the Texas Community Development Block Program Application. Three items will be presented together. Number one, Resolution Number 13-2021, a resolution authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the 2021-2022 Community Development Fund, and authorizing the mayor and city manager to act as the city's executive officers and authorized representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. Number two, Resolution Number 14-2021, a resolution adopting a public access plan for use during construction of public infrastructure projects funded through the Texas Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Program. Number three, Resolution Number 15-2021, a resolution determining that the specific projects within the city contains distinct conditions which are detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and constitutes a blighted area. And there aren't our citizen speakers.
All right.
So Mayor and Council, this is a project initiated through the Main Street Program, taking advantage of a grant program that's federal funding and passed through the state's program and now to us as an applicant. So this three-part action here, I'll ask Megan Fulkerts to describe what we're asking you to do. And Megan is our new senior management analyst, so she's working with the Main Street Board and the Main Street Program, but she's also taking on multiple other assignments. Basically, this was, you'll remember Sherry Mosher, her position, but reclassified and more multipurpose at this point. So Megan, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Megan Fulkerts. I'm the senior management analyst for the city as well as the Main Street liaison. I will be discussing the three resolutions on the agenda today for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program and giving you all a refresher on what this grant is and why we're applying for it. Okay. The CDBG Main Street Program provides funding to address public improvements within an official Texas Historical Commission Main Street City. This grant funds activities required to eliminate architectural barriers for persons with disabilities, usually deteriorated sidewalks or lack of curb cuts and ADA ramps. The maximum grant under the Main Street Program is $350,000, with a match of commitment by the organization applying for funding of 15%, which is $52,500 for Kerrville to receive the maximum points. The deadline to apply for funds is May 3, 2021. The program that's been reviewed with the Main Street Advisory Board addresses the outdated signalization and pedestrian accessibility at Water Street and Earl Garrett, constructing a three-way stop and pedestrian crossing at Water and Clay Street, and utilizing any remaining funding to address the sidewalks, bricks, and uprooted tree wells in the downtown core along Earl Garrett and Water Street. Extra points are awarded if at least 50% of the requested funds are spent on ADA compliance activities, such as sidewalks, handicap ramps, handrails, and/or ADA parking. For a request of $350,000, that means at least $175,000 must be spent addressing ADA issues. As you may recall, staff has presented a few items previously to council for your approval, including our request to use GrantWorks to aid us in applying for this grant, approving the selection of Kimley Horn for engineering and construction estimation services, and to adopt the Kerrville Citizen Participation Plan. The timeline below describes what is left of this process. The deadline to apply is May 3, so our responsibilities are due at the end of April. Once that is submitted, they will spend the next few months reviewing the application. They anticipate the award notification to be between July and August 2021. If Kerrville is awarded funding, the next items are anticipated to start at the times listed above. The image on the left is the project map. I've highlighted the anticipated project areas in yellow. Specifically, we are looking to do a complete traffic signal rebuild at the intersection of Water Street and Earl Garrett Street. This includes replacement of mast arms, replacement of curb ramps, rewiring the signal, relocating the cabinet, adding pedestrian poles, and adding radar presence detection. And our selected engineering team from Kimley Horn estimates this will be roughly $246,000. The second project is constructing a pedestrian-controlled three-way stop at the Water Street and Clay Street intersection. This is specifically to provide a safe pedestrian connection from the city's parking garage to the new Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, library, and other downtown merchants. Kimley Horn estimates this will cost approximately $33,000. We hope to use the remaining funding on damaged sidewalks, especially near tree wells at several areas located on Water Street from Highway 16 to Washington Street and Earl Garrett Street from Water Street to Main Street. There are three resolutions we are seeking approval on tonight. The first one authorizes the city manager to act as the authorized representative for the application and submittal of this grant in all matters pertaining to our participation in this program. This resolution specifically includes the city matched funding I mentioned in a previous slide. In order to receive maximum points for this grant, the city must commit 15% of the total being applied for. In this case, the application will be for $350,000, which makes the city's contribution total $52,500. This amount could be budgeted by council in fiscal year 2022's budget from our General Capital Improvement Project Fund during the summer budget process, once the city is better aware of the summer 2021 award notification. The second resolution is adopting a public access plan for use during the construction phase. This details how the public and business owners affected will receive notification during this phase and ensures business operations will not be unnecessarily interrupted during the construction process. The third resolution determines that the specified projects within the city contain conditions that are a detriment to public health, safety, and welfare of the community. This resolution contains verbiage discussing blighted conditions, but we want to clarify that this is only regarding the projects themselves. This does not suggest that any businesses or streets in their entirety are blighted. This resolution specifically details the limited accessibility for people requiring ADA accommodations through noncompliant ramps and crossings and tripping hazards in certain areas of the existing sidewalks. Overall, the critical elements of this grant application have been completed and are only lacking the approval of these resolutions, so we may finish the application. Our consultants are confident Kerrville will score highly on our application and are hopeful that we will receive the funding necessary to complete these much-needed improvement projects downtown. Does anybody have any questions?
Megan, did, I'm not sure if you said, what are our chances of being awarded this?
The consultants are very confident that we have high chances, especially with the city matched funding. We'll get high points for that.
We would.
And how, when these are, especially Water Street and 16, those are major intersections with, how do they put all of this together to keep traffic flowing?
With that, I'm not sure. EA, do you have any?
Yeah, well, that's why we've hired an engineer on this project, so it's not just, you know, city staff doing this. We've had to hire a consultant, consulting engineer, which, to help us with, you know, designing the project and the scope of the project that's familiar with this program. The firm that contacted us about the grant, we weren't aware of it. They contacted us because they thought we were highly, could be highly successful in the award, because we haven't received a grant through this program in some time. The same firm has worked with us in the past with successful results. So anyway, it'll have to be engineered to address those issues.
All right.
Megan, great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
And this, it seems, would help set us up for some more development downtown and attraction of businesses? Yeah, okay. All right. Ms. Fulkerts, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Counsel, questions?
Now, I just have a question about blighted area. And is it, does that have to be in that resolution? Can we just take that out and leave it, have it end with the welfare of the community?
It's got to be in there. It's required for the grant application. And as Megan mentioned, it's not about the area, it's about the condition of the sidewalks. You know, where you have the buckling of the old bricks and the tripping hazard and so forth. It's not really to speak to the property owners themselves, it's more the public realm and the condition that it's in currently.
Okay. And I believe you said, Mark, this will, Megan, this will come out of next year's budget?
Yes, if this looks like it's going to be successful, then you would probably see us recommend it in the proposal. us recommend it in the proposed budget as the matching funds, the 52.5. And then, of course, it'd be up to the council to appropriate that.
All right, okay. Come answer questions. All right, is there a motion in regard to this matter?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution number, can I, I think I can do it this way, number thirteen dash twenty twenty-one, number fourteen dash twenty twenty-one, and number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one, as presented.
I'll second.
Good. Further discussion? Will you get a second? Okay, all right, Gary. All right, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. Okay, would you read in six B?
Resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution creating a public health task force as an ad hoc board for its consideration of issues related to public health and recommendation as to the creation of a local health authority and authorizing the mayor to appoint its members. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay, all right. Counsel, any questions on this one after city manager makes a remark?
Yes, Mayor, just briefly, so I've had conversations with all of you individually about some of the needs that we have in our community. As we've grown larger and larger and our needs have become more and more diverse, you know, we're not a sleepy little city with just some minor issues going on, and we actually take care of a much larger region on a daily basis, whether that's retail or education or what have you. So, public health is, doesn't know boundaries, right? It doesn't, whether it's a county boundary or a city boundary, and oftentimes what you'll find in more urbanized areas is a public health district or authority, which are kind of, they're two different things, but one or the other we need, we, you know, might want to examine. So this task force would be charged with simply bringing back some recommendations for you all to consider. They're not making any decisions on their own, they're just examining and studying the feasibility and the desirability of creating this kind of authority. And so, this resolution would authorize the mayor to make the appointments, and then they would have to bring back within six months of their first meeting a recommendation to you all on, you know, whether you all should move forward or not. And of course, ultimately, it would be your decision. Of course, the mayor and I have had conversations about involving the county directly and other DSHS and other appropriate entities as part of this study. But I think, particularly with the pandemic, it is, has really raised the obvious need for something like this to be in place.
Yeah, yeah. And again, as city manager said, there's some indication we would have helped through the pandemic had this been in place, but it is just one more step to being a healthier community. And I will say to council, I think you know this, in terms of appointing these members, I want your input, ideas, and so forth if we pass this.
Do we have a county health authority? Who is that?
No.
We don't?
No.
Okay.
No, no, we don't.
There's a lot of different services provided, you know, everything from private clinics like Raphael Clinic and others, as you're well aware of.
Yes.
And, but there's not any central coordination of all that.
Okay.
And so what a health district or what we'll oftentimes do is, is put all that under one umbrella and make it more accessible, and then also it helps in coordination with state efforts, like what we've seen with other health districts in Texas that are coordinating with the state directly, Tedom becoming hubs, on doing, providing population-based services as well as WIC, you know, Women, Infant, and Children Services, and some even include animal control. I mean, it could, it could be wide-ranging, so, but anyway, that would ultimately be y'all's decision in terms of any, any moving forward on this.
Okay, if we made the decision to go that route, would it, it would be somebody hired by the city, paid by the city, with benefits from the city, correct?
Not necessarily. The models that I'm used to are joint city-county. So for example, it'd be like, think of, think of the airport, it's a joint city-county operation where it has its own board, has its own executive director, that type of thing.
Thank you. How many would you anticipate on this ad hoc?
For the exploratory group, eight to 10. More? Mark, what?
Maybe a couple more, depends on, as we get into it, who we think we need at the time.
Who needs to be there? No, I think it's absolutely, well, worth looking into, so I think we should give it a try.
All right, we have one speaker?
Mayor and Council, I was concerned, and I answered some of my questions about where you were going with this. I am vitally interested in health for the community, being a 58-year retired pharmacist now, but after 58 years, that has been my, one of my interests. And I would definitely be interested in serving on that. I don't know whether you'd have to go through the normal channels of applying, or are you just going to appoint somebody directly? But I do have an interest, and as I said, I have been involved in this community 26 years now. I was, I and fellow Elk were responsible for getting the, no smoking ordinance passed. We even beat San Antonio to the punch, when it was, smoking was prevalent in restaurants and so forth. We, we took it upon ourselves to do it. We took a lot of arrows from different organizations that didn't like it, including my own organization, Elks, they didn't like it either, but we did it, and I think it's been well-served in the community. I know a lot of people enjoy going in a restaurant, not having to inhale the smoke. That's one of the issues that I would be very interested in working with in this health, health board you're talking about. So, volunteer my services and look forward to working with you. I do hope that it would coordinate with the county, possibly the state, and I think it, I think it would work well together rather than trying to do something independently. Thank you.
Good, good. Thank you, Bill. I remember when you got that no smoking ordinance passed, and I went to a restaurant I liked to go to, they had about 25 tables, and one table right by the door was, was no smoking, and the rest of them was smoking, but, okay. Counsel, what are your wishes on this?
I'll move that we approve Resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-one as presented.
All right.
I'll second.
You have a second? Okay. All in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand? Okay. Would you read in six C for us?
Funding agreement between the City of Kerrville Economic Improvement Corporation, City of Kerrville, Texas, and the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation for Electrical Infrastructure on Tranquility Island in the amount of $100,000.
All right, thank you. City manager?
Yes, sir, I'd ask Ashley Ball to present this item, please.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a little bit of brief history on this project before we talk about the deal points of it. This is brought forth by an application to the Economic Improvement Corporation by the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation. If you recall, this corporation was formed in the 1990s, and their job was to essentially decorate the courthouse. Their vision was repurposed this past year, and their goal has moved away from that and is working to raise funds and improve the Christmas lighting and holiday spirit around Kerrville, and they have selected the Tranquility Island Project as one of their projects for, that they would like to assist with funding. Their accomplishments, this past year, they decided in the fall, rather quickly, to do some decorative lights downtown, the gold trees that were put up on the utility poles was a project of this organization. They decided to do this in September. At the end of the month, they'd raised $40,000 already, so they're quite successful on their fundraising. K-Pub installed the ornaments, and we also did a live broadcast of lighting the hills virtually across the community as well. The project goal for Light the Island is to light the pedestrian bridge behind the library along Tranquility Island to Francisco Lemus Street Bridge. There's about roughly 100 trees or so that we feel that we could safely light with uplights. The current electrical on the island is at capacity right now, we have a 60-amp service, we'll need to be increasing that to a 200-amp service. An additional lighting, additional electrical will be required to do the improvements to light the additional trees. We were able to light about 30 trees this year, and if you take a look at the screen, that's a drone shot of what the trees looked like this past Christmas season. It's about 30 or so trees that were lit with multiple uplights in the trees. And so our goal is to light the entire island, within reason, about 100 trees to look like this. There'll be LED uplights. So the project's scope will include expanding the electrical infrastructure on the island, updating the 60-amp service to 200-amp service, and then we will be installing LED lights in the trees to uplight them. We've already engaged an electrical engineer to design the scope and the construction for this for us. The city will be funding this cost, and if the project does come in under budget, we would be asking for a reimbursement to maximize the dollars for this project. We will also be including ground receptacles, that way we can also put ground features and decorations on the ground as well, and it'll also give us the ability to program for special events as well. It'll be designed for the floodplain and additional panel board improvements as well. We're anticipating this cost to be around $200,000. The EIC was asked for a matching grant of $100,000, and the Christmas Lighting Corporation plans to raise the other $100,000 to match the grant. Once those funds have been raised, those will be turned over to the city, and the city will manage the project. Future potential opportunities with this improvement, we're already doing a little bit of snow on the island, artificial snow, and we do plan to obviously expand on that, and there's a lot of other things that we can do. The additional lighting will be great as well. We've looked at evaluating the ice skating rink, possibly doing some sledding opportunities, and putting some fake, real snow, ice on the ground to be able to utilize for the Christmas season, and to be able to program the island. This project is consistent with Kerrville 2050. There's two specific action items in red that you will see highlighted above, and there's several additional action items that support this project, such as increased programming in the park opportunities as well. The timeline for this project, the EIC heard the application in March, they came back and asked us to draft a funding agreement and to hold a public hearing, which was held on March 15, and the agreement was approved by the EIC. The final step in this process is consideration of the city council tonight at your pleasure. And project deadlines, if approved, the KCLC has until December 31 to raise the matching funds, and the project construction should start no later than March 15, 2022, but our goal is to complete this project this calendar year. And with that, our staff recommendation is to approve the agreement as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel?
Just a quick comment from the EIC's perspective, that they were unanimously behind this project. It's much more than just Christmas lighting, too. I know you didn't have time to go into that, but these can be used 4th of July, special occasions, weddings, it's really going to completely transform that island into something that people, instead of driving by and not even noticing it, it's going to make them stop and go, wow. So the EIC was completely 100% behind this project.
Good, good. All right, anyone else? Do we have a speaker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion on this matter?
I would love to make a motion that we approve the funding agreement between the City of Kerrville Economic Improvement Corporation, City of Kerrville, and the Christmas Lighting Corporation in the amount of $100,000.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, second, Ms. Hughes. Okay, all in favor of this, please let it be known by the raised hands. And there we go, all right. I wonder why he's clapping.
You can clap that very much here.
Six D?
City's ongoing preparedness in response to COVID-19 coronavirus and declaration of local state of disaster due to a public health emergency, March 20, 2020, and we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, give you a brief update since the last meeting. Activity as of today, so we have 31 active, 83 deaths in Kerrville, 40, over 4,000 recovered, five hospitalized, which has changed, I'll show you on the next slide, that is a little bit of an increase there. And so on the next slide, you can really see the COVID cases since February 27, kind of tracking back a month. We've, we've definitely been on a steady decline. If you remember back in mid-January, we were as high as 500. So, look at the numbers, we've been holding in the 30s for about the last week, and the hospitalizations, the bottom line. We've been zero for about a week, and today was the first report back that we got that we had five hospitalized. So I'm cautiously optimistic with these numbers. We're always being very, working closely with Peterson to monitor that. Local update here, so we have free public testing at the Hill Country Youth Event Center, that is this week, so Monday the 22nd through Friday the 26th, it's eight to five. It is free testing, drive-through only, no appointment is necessary. Meetings in collaboration for this week, so we have the community leadership meeting this Thursday, March 25, and then on Friday the 26th at 10:00 a.m., we have the community update via Zoom in regards to the COVID response. COVID vaccine update, so some of the statistics I've provided in the past, the Phase 1B is where we're currently at, and there are 14,000 residents that are 65-plus, about 14,000 residents that are between 16 and 64 with any medical condition, and there are about 1,000 school and childcare personnel. So here's the news of where the vaccine, so per the DSHS website, so we have administered, actually, citizens have received, 15,400 vaccine doses have been administered, so 9,200 are residents 65 and older, 6,200 are between 16 and 64, and that included, we did recently, was 450 school and childcare personnel were also vaccinated. So, so that is good news, that is updated every day on the DSHS website. The community vaccine clinic, so more good news, so Peterson Regional Medical Center, so for this week, we will be administering a total of 2,621 first doses. That will begin on Thursday the 25th, Friday the 26th, and finish up on Tuesday the 30th. So that does not include an additional 500 we'll be doing for second doses, so that's really good news there. Pre-registration list, currently the Tier 1B is what we're focused on, that includes school and childcare personnel, and recently, as you will know, the Tier 1C did open for those that are between 50 and 64 years old. The pre-registration list currently has 4,400 residents signed up on the list, and that does not include the 2,600 we're about to vaccinate over the next week. And as always, continue the other, to monitor the other local sites of HEB stores, Walgreens and Walmart, Family Practice, Medical Arts Pharmacy, and the Kerrville VA for those that are eligible. And the Department of State Health Services, as I've mentioned before, I'm cautiously optimistic, but COVID-19 continues to remain a public health threat. So on the Department of State Health Services website, you can get information on where to get vaccinated, they have listed hubs, all vaccine providers, they have vaccine availability maps with contact information, they have important education information with links to the CDC and the FDA, best practices, and any other questions that anyone may have on that. And with that, I will take any questions from council.
Do you have questions for chief?
Chief, the majority of our childcare workers and school teachers, is it the majority? Are we halfway there? Do you have a feel?
So, they were all offered the vaccine, which according to DSHS, were about 1,000 of those. So out of the 1,450 took advantage of the vaccine and were provided that, I believe that was on a Saturday about a week, a week and a half ago.
Okay, thank you.
First, those 2,620, what are you saying there? First dose, 2,620, what are you saying there?
Sorry, Ms. Mayor?
We're going to do, they're going to do that number of vaccinations?
For three days, yes, sir. Not including an additional 500 we're going to do on second doses. So this Thursday, we're going to do 500 first dose, we're going to do 500 second doses. Friday, we're going to do a little over 1,000, and next Tuesday, we're going to do a little over 1,000. Again, we can, we can easily manage that in those clinics.
Okay. I'm going to put you on the spot.
Always.
I'll do, I'll do, I'll do the community update Friday. They've heard from me so many times. What would you, I know you're going to, you're going to speak, present data. What would you say really needs to be emphasized at this point?
I think two components. One, I think it's important to understand that regardless of the steps we're taking with reopening Texas, that is not necessarily work with a public health emergency. So COVID-19 is still there. It is still a public health emergency. People still need to take those precautions, wear the mask if you, if you have not received a vaccine, and I encourage everyone to sign up and get a vaccine based on any information you may have. Second piece for that is that in regards to Curville, so here we are seeing the light of the end of the tunnel. So 2,600 doses are what we're receiving this next week is really positive news, that that is really good to see that we have 4,400 people on a pre-registration list, and that's about half of them that we're going to be able to manage through, through that list. So still cautiously optimistic, it's still allocations that we need to receive from the state, and, but I'm hoping maybe this next Friday, we will see more good news in regards to allocations. So, but Peterson's been working really hard with this, and it is a very complicated system with having two doses, because you have to give the one now, and if you do 1,000 today, in four weeks, you're coming back to do another 1,000. So it does get very difficult to manage, and they, they've done a fantastic job with managing that.
Well, thank you for all of your work on this.
Absolutely.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, any other word?
We do have one speaker signed up.
We have a speaker, that's, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Yes, sir, Ms. Francina, could you call Roman Garcia?
Mr. Garcia, please state your name and address, and you now have four minutes to If you press star six, that will unmute your line.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you, I'm sorry about that. Roman Garcia, 934 Pecan Street, Curville, Texas, 78028. Good evening, city council. Unfortunately, I'm unable to be there in person with you, but I did want to address two issues tonight. So as we all know, on March 2nd of this year, the governor issued an executive order that reopen Texas 100%, as he put it, and got rid of the mask mandate. And in that executive order, he did state that individuals are still strongly encouraged to wear face coverings, but no person may be required by any jurisdiction to wear or to mandate the wearing of a face covering. In a different section, he also stated that this does not preclude businesses and other establishments from, though requiring their employees or customers to follow, you know, their additional safety measures, including the wearing of a face covering. However, at the March 9th, 2021 city council meeting, the city manager did state that, he reiterated that businesses and private entities can still require the wearing of face coverings and other safety measures, but that city council was still going to require the public to not only get their temperature taken before entering the council chambers at the Calu, but also to continue wearing face covering. And this is because of the local declaration of disaster that was issued last year, where the city council then has alternate procedures to your meetings, and as part of those alternate procedures, you now have to, you know, you requiring citizens and anybody on the public who's going to attend your meetings to do this. This seems a direct contradiction to the governor's executive order, which states that no jurisdiction can require any person to wear a face covering. So I would ask that city council address that issue, but, and then I have a second one to state, and make no mistake, COVID-19 is still, you know, something to consider for everybody's safety. But I do, and I believe, as the governor also stated, that it's time to let everybody, you know, give everybody their freedom back to make these decisions for themselves, and it lets everybody know that, you know, they have their own role to play in their own personal safety and the safety of others. And, and we all know what these safety measures are that need to be taken in order to prevent this. The other thing that I did want to touch on real quickly is that since these alternate procedures have been implemented, we have now allowed citizens to speak on items by calling in via phone, like I am, by using the Zoom app, or by submitting written comments. And soon after these procedures were implemented, I did speak to council at least at two meetings, asking that you find another venue or location to permit citizens to attend and speak at these meetings in person for several reasons, including for the sake of full transparency, accountability, and keeping our government open to its people. And thankfully, after a few urgings, you reopened your meetings and now are allowing people to speak to you both virtually and in person. Now, citizen participation and involvement are very crucial to the success of government, especially at the local level. And not only that, but the citizens should always be put first when it comes to giving them an opportunity to voice their concerns, compliments, or ask questions of their elected officials. So to that effort, as we start moving in a direction of normalcy, and when council ends up removing the declaration of disaster, I ask that the council, though, maintain all of the current methods that the citizens have to speak to you, by calling in via phone, by using the Zoom app, by submitting written comments, and by appearing to you in person. So in conclusion, I would appreciate a response in regards to the governor's executive order relating to our local declaration of disaster, as well as any thoughts that council may have on keeping all of those methods of people coming and speaking to you. Thank you.
May I comment, mayor?
Yeah.
Today, I decided to talk to an attorney at the Texas Municipal League and actually ask a question about the, the mask mandate. And they've actually, and she, and she did send me a response. And it starts with, we've heard some saying a city can't require pandemic mitigation measures on city property and city facilities or by city employees, is that true? The response, no executive order GA 34 expressly authorizes the city to require mass social distancing and other appropriate pandemic mitigation efforts. No executive order. It says that a spokesman for the governor confirmed that city authority in the Texas Tribune article that says in an email, Abbott spokesman Renee Eze confirmed that cities are allowed to take this measure, just like private companies can with their prop, with their property. As we explain, this is from Texas Municipal, Texas Municipal League. They go on to say, as we explained last week, executive order GA 34 supersedes certain city regulatory authority. However, as with previous orders, GA 34 provides that nothing in this executive order precludes businesses, other, or other establishments from requiring employees or customers to follow additional hygiene measures, including the wearing of face covering. So I just wanted to be clear on that as well. Appreciate the comment, and that was the response I received.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, all right. No actions required, let's move on to financial update. Could you read that for us?
Financial update for the month ended February 28th, 2021.
So mayor and council, I'll stand in on this one for Amy. As you know, she's on personal leave tonight, so I'll go briefly through her presentation. And I'm not sure who's moving the screen, but whoever's doing it, thank you, and we'll try to stay in sync. So as you look at this report, this is only through January. Obviously, we're in March, but this is, one-third of the year has expired, so we still have two-thirds to go, so it's still early. This slide that's up there now, just real quick, property tax, we're behind, and I'll go over why, the reason for, why that is the case in a moment. And then sales tax is up significantly, as you, as you all are much aware. Expenditures are pretty much in line, although they're slightly higher due to winter storm types of activities. Next slide. Now, this is just graphically what I just mentioned, next slide. Okay, so on property tax, the 75,000 that you saw previously, a big chunk of that is due to the delinquency of taxes by Mooney. And then we also have more taxpayers that are requesting the half-pay option, so that's the reason why we're a little bit behind. It's not something we're terribly concerned about, and we will be pursuing the, the back taxes with Mooney. On sales tax, as you've heard many times before, and are well aware, we've got very strong performance as a regional retail hub, and also our online sales. So headed into March, we are actually ahead of budget by $594,000. And then March, we saw, it's not in these numbers, obviously, because this is just through January, but we saw 19% higher payment for March. So year-to-date, all told, through March, we're actually 13% higher than prior year. Next slide. Okay, other revenue, Curville Schreiner Park, we were actually down in February, or 27% due to the winter storm. And then year-to-date, revenues are up, still up, though, 52,000, or 22%. Municipal court continues to be lower, we still don't have our courts open for trial. We also were impacted when this court was closed due to the winter storm. EMS, a much brighter picture than we were looking at in the middle of the pandemic. It's up, the emergency medical service revenue is up 77,000 compared to fiscal year 2020, and this is largely due to the non-emergency transports and fewer disallowed charges. Next slide. Actual expenses are slightly higher than budget due to payroll costs associated with the winter storm, which you'll see in an upcoming slide. Next slide. Water fund summary, this is through, again, through the end of February, so when you look at total revenue, we are up 513,000, and expenditures were below 485, so that a net of 998.7 to the, to the good as compared to budget. Again, this is not reflect storm numbers. The water fund revenues, again, as I just mentioned, do not include the storm impact. Consumption increases for residential and irrigation categories, those, those categories are up, just due, due to the more usage up through January. On the expenditure side, next slide, next slide, next slide. Okay. We have lower debt service and general fund transfers. Also, supplies and maintenance expenses continue to be less than budget. Next slide. On other funds, on development services, you heard Guillermo talk earlier about how much activity we've had last year compared to this year, so that's why you're seeing less building permit fees being paid, and I'll go into more detail on that in just a moment. Golf is, is up, which continues to be up during the pandemic, and then hotel occupancy tax fund is also up as compared to budget, which is a nice thing to see. And again, these do not include storm numbers. The next slide is a little more detail on development services fund. You know, last year, we had big projects like HEB, KISD, middle school, the landing, Arcady, and so forth. And then on expenditures, we, we budget a straight line, both revenues and expenditures, because we don't know how much is going to come in which month, it's very volatile. So even though we're behind in terms of total building permit revenue compared to budget, you know, we can easily make that up with some of the stuff that we're seeing right now and pending. Next slide. Again, golf is, is up, and then hotel occupancy tax, we expect that we'll see an impact, obviously, from the storm, but, you know, our, our hotels were full during the storm, with people coming off of I-10, and also with water and, and electric service out. Next slide is a little bit more information on the winter storm. We'll give you more of this as, as we put more and more information together, but we saw payroll increases and overtime, increment weather pay and related benefits, a total of 151,000 across all funds, that's additional pay. And then we also had some supplies, supplies and maintenance, you know, gas and so forth, 8,000. So part of this is eligible for reimbursement, and so we're also gearing up to, to seek that reimbursement. Next slide. The city's had 63 damage claims so far. This is just on city property. You can see across the board, it's mostly impacting the parks department and their operations, but also public works, golf courses and so forth. So the preliminary estimate is greater than $200,000. And good news here is the, the deductible that Kim has negotiated on our policy is, we have one deductible of 2,500 for all property damage claims, but that does not include vehicles, which is $500 per vehicle.
That's incredible.
And then, next slide. So looking at increase in water usage, we're estimating a 38% increase. In fact, Julie gave me numbers today, we're, we're making credits to accounts. You know, recall that we decided to use the lower of the prior month or February, whichever was lower, and so that amounted to $200,000 in credits. And so that includes over 4,600 accounts, which is almost half of all accounts are getting some, some level of credit because of the way that we're dealing with the water issue. We're also looking at the winter averaging for sewer, and we're backing out the, the month of February, as we look at that, so that it's not impacting their sewer averaging. Next slide. A little bit of information before I conclude here, the American Rescue Plan Act, we received word that our initial allocation is going to be 5.18 million. That's going to vary, because some cities were left out, and they're kind of reevaluating that calculation, but I think it's going to be pretty close to that number. We've already participated in one webinar, we've got three or four more scheduled, we're getting guidance from TML, the National Lead of Cities, on the limits, restrictions for the use of those funds. The Treasury Department will come out with some guidance, but the good news is that these, while they'll be passing through the state, we're being told that the state cannot put additional restrictions on the use of the funds like they did the first round. And so, and we would get our first allocation very soon, and then our next allocation a few months later. So it'd be two, two tranches or installments. So as we know more and more about that, as more details become available, we'll make the council aware. We are getting some preliminary information about the restriction on the use of those funds, what kinds of things it may be used for, but until we get that treasury guidance, all of it's a little bit speculative right now. And I believe that is the end of the report.
All right.
So I know I went through that quickly, but any, any questions on any of that?
Just, do you know when we're scheduled to reopen the municipal courts, or are we just keeping those closed indefinitely?
Is Kim here?
I can answer that.
Okay.
I think it's, and municipal court is obviously the state court, and so it's subject to the Office of Court Administration and Supreme Court rules, and so I think for now, unless I missed a more recent order, I think it's through June 1.
Okay.
And then they'll reassess, but what I'm hearing and seeing is that they believe it'll open up more in June.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, good report. Okay, items for future agendas? All right. 9A.
Appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board.
All right. The team on that?
Yes, Kim and myself.
Yeah.
Council member, Council member Clarkson. And we have some recommendations to give you. Before I give those names, a couple of things that I wanted to say. We had 16, excuse me, 16 applications, and I don't believe that I have seen 16 applications for any committee so far. It's fantastic, and we just really, really appreciate it. One of the One of the things that, and I talked to all 16 people, one of the things, several of them said, they think it's the most fun committee, so that is one of the reasons. But, but in addition to that, in talking to these people, there was so much pride in our parks, and Ashley, I hope you and your team are listening and hear this, and, and they weren't saying this just because they want to, would like to be appointed to the committee, they were saying it because they truly were proud of all of our parks. And the other thing that I heard over and over was the praise for Ashley and the Parks and Rec team, and just what a, what a huge job they have, and what a great job they do. So just want to pass that on to Ashley, and I hope she'll pass it on to her people. So out of the 16, we can only appoint six, that's the sad part. So this, this was difficult because we had good, good applications, and we wish we could have put all of them on there, but that just, it just wasn't possible this time. So we're encouraging all of them to leave their applications there, because there will be future appointments. So here are the recommendations, we have two reappointments, one is Charles Huber, the second is Wayne Uker. Then we would like to also recommend to appoint Eric Silves, David Bartels, Karen Yonitz, I think I'm saying her name right, and Morgan Bond.
I'll second that, if that's a motion?
That's a motion.
I will second your motion.
Okay. All right, any questions? Okay, all in favor, let it be known by the upraised hand, and it's unanimous. All right. Okay, let me ask you, does anybody want to go into an executive session?
Do we need to?
At, let's see, 7:54, we're adjourned.